All right, should I call the meeting to order?
With 15 seconds to spare.
That's all. Okay, so calling the Elspring Planning Commission meeting to order is the 12th of March 2018. Going to call the roll. Frank?
Here.
Susan?
Here.
Mary Ann?
Here.
Ted?
Here.
And I'm here.
Okay, also present are village planner Denise Swear, solicitor Chris Conard, present in case anything needs to be continued. A.D.A. Williams is here as alternate observing. And I should mention that our sound system isn't going through to the feed as it should, so if you can just project, that would be fantastic. Thanks.
Okay, I'm going to review the agenda. So we're gonna look over the meeting minutes from the 26th of February, which is a special meeting. Right? Yeah? And then we're going to vote for vice chair and chair. And then we're going to have communications. We have some, one communication. Is that one we're talking about? Okay. Council report, citizens comments for anything not on the agenda. And then we're going to have a public hearing for the conditional use application from Andrew and Elizabeth Holyoke for an accessory dwelling unit at 107 Cliff Street. Then we need to talk about how we're going, our plan for updating the comprehensive land use plan, new business, agenda planning, and that'll be it tonight. So we can look at our minutes from the 12th of February. There's only two pages. Does anyone have any?
Yeah, it was actually the date. The date isn't.
Oh, of course! Sorry.
My bad.
I gotcha. I was wondering. It's like, what was it? 26. And then it needs to be changed down there, too.
No, that was just, that was actually.
Oh, that was the 12th.
Yeah.
Of course. Anything else on page one? Page three? Do I hear a motion?
I move to approve the minutes.
A second? Just a voice vote? All on paper?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? All right. Okay. Two minutes. Now for voting for the vice chair, we have one nomination. Are you doing it correct?
Yep.
We're just gonna, we need a motion, right?
You've got the motion, so the motions, that was the last thing. So what you do then is ask if there are any additional motions. You can do that, and then call the vote.
Okay. Are there any additional motions for vice chair of planning commission? All right, I'll call the vote. Ted?
Yes.
Mary Ann?
Yes.
Susan?
Yes.
Frank?
Sure. Yes.
Me? I say yes to you. Yay! Um, now vote for chair. And the motion on the floor already? Yeah?
Yep.
Is, I'm nominated, no photo. So Ted?
Yes.
Yep. Yes!
Yes.
And sure, yes. Yay! Congratulations.
Congratulations.
You're brave, Rose.
All right. I've been vice chair for a few years, but this is my third meeting chairing. Okay, so now communications. We have this here in our packet, or out, laid out for us from the Antioch Ad hoc Bells renovation committee. And how do you want to do this? Do you want to talk about it, and then has the?
It goes under citizens comments, so.
Oh.
So we can just say we have it, and then we'll have, we'll have the person who's here to represent it.
Or in citizens comments. Okay. Sorry about that.
That's the only communications.
That's the only communications we have. Is there any interesting, of interest things going on in council that we'd like to report on, Mary Ann?
Yes.
Wait a minute. Before the council report, weren't you supposed to?
Okay, no, I'm sorry. I thought that was when we commented on.
Yes, I thought so, too.
Yes, okay.
Oh, this?
Yes.
Okay. One of the council goals involves working with the council land trust to secure conservation easements along the Jacoby Creek. And so I met with Krista McGon to discuss this, and we agreed that it would be important to understand exactly where the Elspring's urban service factory is, because we weren't exactly clear. So that seemed like that would be a good thing for planning commission, planning commission to weigh in on, and so we can have exact clarity on the western, the whole western side. The reason being that we don't want to put conservation easements probably on properties within the urban service. That, that leaves those properties potentially annexed and developed. But we do want to put conservation easements presumably right along that Jacoby Creek corridor. So is that something?
I think the last urban service boundary map that we have is 2008.
That sounds about right. You reproduced it a little bit of a pencil.
Yeah.
Well, we'd like, I think, planning commission to get a copy of it, look at it, review the properties, and then, you know, make, many commission recommendations of what.
Can someone give the definition of urban service boundary?
My understanding is it's the boundary past which a gravity flow sewer could not work. So it's sort of self-definition of the area.
And it should have been, probably included, the latest one we had would have been included in some of those attachments that were passed out for the comprehensive land use plan?
I mean, it's sort of.
I think so, yeah.
Yeah, you know, it's very difficult, sort of difficult to exactly tell.
And is that something that changes?
No.
It sounds like it's back to your very first page.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It's just need to have a map big enough so you clearly see where that line goes, so we can.
Okay.
So, you know, if, if planning commission can get to that, doesn't seem like it would take a real long time to look at it and make a recommendation.
Well, the recommendation is simple, I mean, to me, is relative to the watershed. Everything to the Jacoby Creek side, so that's topography line goes to Jacoby Creek, everything to the other side of the village, so we'd be able to bring.
So just, so we can have clarity on where those, which properties are where.
It might be good to have some extra eyes on the map.
Yeah, I mean, this, you know, there was a lot of work done on the urban service, urban service boundary map. Now, I agree that this is really hard to read, and it's, you know, faded and whatnot, but, you know, that should answer everybody's question, because based on rats, which is the watershed.
So just need to make sure you have the map.
Do that.
And it's readable.
Yeah, I've seen copies of it.
And you should go look at it and weigh in on it.
Yeah, I've, I've seen copies that are.
So would that be able to come up the next?
Yeah.
Next meeting?
Yeah, we'll put that forward.
Then the other update, as you know, I think, we had our housing needs assessment. We have a housing advisory board that is working right now on what we're calling community conversations on housing, and they will happen in April, they'll be four of them. And we're finalizing the PowerPoint for those conversations. Oh, yeah. And they'll be happening the 4th, the 5th, the 9th, and the 21st of April at the Baptist Church, Mills Lawn, the Senior Center, and John Bryan. Four different times, four different days of the week, so that we can track people who can't come one day or one time, and they can come another time.
Did you get those dates again?
The 4th?
4th in the evening, that's a Wednesday. The 5th is a Thursday, I think. The 5th is the Senior Center, the 4th is Mills Lawn at 7:00. The 9th is a Monday at 6 o'clock at the Baptist Church. The 21st is a Saturday at 2:00, and probably rooms A and B. So it would be great for planning commission to, for all of the planning commission members to be able to come to one of them. They're all going to be the same thing happening. The other thing that we have started working on, the advisory board, is contacting potential, not necessarily potential consultants for us, but people who work in developing low-income housing, workforce housing, mixed-income housing. And so we've had a few conversations so far. Tomorrow, another one, to get ideas of kind of strategies and plan, ways of planning for housing. And so we're developing a list of potential strategies that could be used to develop this kind of housing in Elspring's, and probably bringing a list of strategies the planning commission, again, to weigh in. Council will be weighing in on it, the advisory board will be weighing in on it, and probably makes sense that planning commission will look at that, too. I've also developed a very, very grand timeline of how this might play out this year. And comp will be talking about it tomorrow night at council meeting. Timeline included for that. And I'll be nice to them once it seems a little more realistic.
So what's the, I'm a little confused. If you're looking for strategies on how to develop affordable housing, whatever that might mean, and you're also now just putting out the housing needs assessment, it seems like there's a cart before the horse here. I mean, if, if the housing needs assessment says that we need housing across the board, and the percentages of which, including rentals, ownerships, and all those things, that's a strategy.
No, that, that expresses the need, it doesn't express the strategy.
Well, but it would seem to me that the housing needs assessment would state that a strategy could bring more affordable living units into the villages to accommodate all of those needs, because loosening up real estate is really the issue.
Well, what, the housing needs assessment, you've probably seen.
No, I've read it from cover to cover.
So it, it gives the trends. It also says, if we continue on this trend, we could have this much more senior housing, we could have this more, more high-end housing, and then we could have this much rental housing, if we continue on that trend. First of all, we need to decide whether we want to continue on that trend, and I think most people don't think we do. In other words, we, most of us don't think we should continue to be getting older, whiter, and richer, and having less people be able to live here. So council, yes?
Can we talk about this, when we talk about the comprehensive land use plan?
Talk about it when?
At the end of the meeting, when we talk about the comprehensive land use plan?
I, I don't, well, let me just wrap this up.
Okay.
So when I'm talking about strategy, I'm talking about, we may see, we may say, we are going to offer down payment assistance for low-income homeowners. That would be a strategy. That's not, the need might be, we need 100 more units of workforce housing for families who make median income. That would be the need. Strategy might be down payment assistance. So that's the distinction. So we're accumulating lists of possible strategies. Some may work here, some may not. So that's, we're trying, we're doing more than, you know, more than on track at the same time.
Okay. Um, next, citizens comments. So this is when we're going to talk about the communications that we've got from the Ad hoc Bells renovation committee. Is that you?
It's me.
Peter? Can you come up and introduce yourself, please?
Yes, I'm Peter Tanson. I'm currently a resident scholar at Antioch College. You'll note that this is just a concept paper. This is no plan set in stone. No plans really have gone anywhere yet. We haven't talked to the board of trustees, and they have to approve it. It would require the college acquiring a portion of the parking lot for Verhain laboratories. They have a 20,000 square foot parking lot, and at the present time, they park six cars in it. So at least in terms of their needs, they don't show, look like they need it, but who knows? And of course, it would, the need to be rezoned, and probably there's lots of things I have thought about here. So the building's structurally very sound. It's really impressive how well-built it is, what good condition it's in. If anyone has been in the building, about 20 years ago, the roof leaked, and some of the ceiling tiles on the second, third floor have fallen, and they've never been cleaned up. So it looks, on the third floor, it looks unkempt, but it's really very sound. So it needs a new roof. The floors and the roof deck are all solid. Interior walls are concrete block, they can't be really removed.
Is it the interior walls?
The interior walls are all concrete block. And so the footprint of the building and the spaces are locked in, but doors could be cut between what used to be individual little offices, and larger spaces be created, either for an office or for apartments. They'd be small apartments. Or at least most of them would be small apartments. There is one area of the building that has larger floors. And of course, it would need all the electric, heating, cooling, and new windows and new plumbing. So it's a, it's a job. We have approached anybody, and it would not point where we could approach anybody to do anything. This is just an informational sharing thing. So if you've got questions, shoot.
Yeah, in the education zone, you can have multifamily dwellings, and.
Oh.
You can have office research, it may, depending on what it is you want to do. And you could actually set up a meeting with me, and I'll meet with you one-on-one and kind of go over what, what can be done in that zone.
Great.
You may not need to rezone it.
In fact, if you'd have educational zoning, you don't want to rezone, you have a lot more options for Graham to run through the college that you would never have once you rezoned, you're president.
So, you know, if you want to call me, and we can set the time, and then I can let you know, based on what issue your final concept is and what you're planning on doing, it may be a permitted use, it may be a conditional use. If it's a conditional use, then you will come back to this body again.
Yeah. At this stage, we don't have any set in stone, except that the building is sitting empty. It's really a sound building, and it seems a shame not to use it. And the village says they'd like appropriate housing, so maybe it's a win-win. Anybody else? Okay, thanks.
Thank you.
Okay, so moving on to public hearings. Can I run down this real fast line? You move on.
Yeah.
So you're gonna give a presentation on the conditional use application for 107 Cliff Street longer.
Before we start, full disclosure here, I am one lot away from being a neighbor of the Holy Oaks. I've known the Holy Oaks for 20 some odd years. I don't think that I can't be impartial relative to this, but if planning commission member or the applicant thinks that I might be, I think it's a good time to recuse myself.
In that situation, do you?
I'm copying you, Ted.
Our alternate is here. Can you sit in for this portion?
If you were, the alternate is here.
Yes.
If Ted's refusing himself, yes.
Well, I'm not.
Oh, you're not? You're asked if Ted's asking.
Yeah, I mean, usually in VZA, you know, because we, we're a small village, everybody knows each other on some level. You know, I don't have any financial interest in this, but we always just kind of threw it to the board, and, you know, if there was a perception of an impropriety, you know, the board discussed it, and then we kind of said, let's, it'd be better to recuse him or not, and that's kind of what I was throwing. So I'm just, you know, being fully vetted.
Since I know everybody on the board, and if you all recuse yourselves, why don't you?
Is, is everybody okay with the, that's saying? Something, where'd you come up? I'm gonna ask you to recuse yourself, but I don't think at this time it's necessary. Okay.
Okay, so the Holy Oaks plan to build accessory structure. It's going to be a garage with an apartment above. He's going to be using his straw bale infill, which he's done in other locations around town with success. The lot is on a corner, so according to the zoning code, when there's two front lot lines, the shorter the two lot lines becomes the front. So the facing, the front-facing lot line is on Railroad Street with the rear at the location of the neighbor's driveway entrance. So because of that, they needed to keep their, their setbacks 10 feet from the rear and five feet from the side. And that is what they have done. So this also meets the, it's less than 66% at 560 square feet, and I believe, do you plan on living there yourself at some point?
I, it's a good possibility.
Yeah. And the, as far as parking, the, you need to have 20 feet for a driveway, but this is a very unusual lot, and that department's always been, there's a big patch there that is right-of-way. And so a portion of that, you've always parked your vehicles there in that area that is actually the village right-of-way. But that coupled with the setback for the garage, it'll be more than 20 feet.
And that's all I have. Okay. Any discussion, thoughts from the board?
I think it fits right in with the intent of the new zoning code. Absolutely favor this. Put a motion to approve, have submitted.
Second. Should I call the roll before we hear from the applicant?
I just wanted.
Yeah. I have to have the public here on first.
Yes, thank you.
And also to see if Andy wanted to say anything.
Yeah, that's what I was saying from that.
Does the microphone work, or can I sit here?
No.
Your microphones don't work with this or not?
That one up there, I understand. I want you in this side.
I got, I got away with that, using the microphone. All I want to say is I've got a really fine self-portrait on the wall right outside here, so. And if, I don't have anything else to say, I don't think, assuming everybody's in favor, or both, or assuming the majority is in favor, I don't need to say anything. I have a really fine letter from my neighbor to the rear saying how much she wants you to approve it, but I didn't think I'd have to pull it out.
I just wanted to ask, what are you planning on using the dwelling, accessory dwelling for?
Well, our main concept is we will move into it and then rent out the house we live in now. Conceivably, we would rent it out instead and stay where we are, but our, our main, our primary focus would be the downsides.
We'll have a microwave?
Oh, good point. We'll have a whole kitchen.
Yeah.
But my wife swore off microwaves because she said they were bad.
Oh, you know, it's required.
I noticed.
We could wave that with a horn. Oh, can we? Can we do that? I would like to do that. That's my.
Particularly if it has a stove.
I mean, particularly if you just don't want to have a microwave.
Right, go ahead.
Well, I think it was a microwave in case there's not a stove there, but since.
It's pretty clear that it requires a microwave. We should probably make that next moment to let all those jokes about it.
Well, I didn't know if that was the difference between accessory dwelling versus a regular primary. I don't know.
Yeah, yeah.
It's a means to be able to cook. If you have a stove, it can replace a microwave.
It can.
But you have to have, in order to call it a dwelling unit by the Ohio Building Code, you have to have a means.
I think it pretty, it says stove as well.
No, it doesn't.
No, that's why I always thought it was microwave.
I could have that. I was like, okay, but that's good to have.
Oh, okay, so it's microwave or stove?
Yeah.
It says microwave or stove, and it's like.
Oh, see? That's what I thought.
Okay, so. All right. Did you folks want to address Denise's raised question on the report regarding stormwater runoff, or you could with that?
Would you comment?
Denise had, had said planning commission may want to consider stormwater issues. You may not, but she, she didn't raise it in her recommendations.
Do you want to give any other comments about this? Is there, are there problems in that area with stormwater runoff? There's a creek right behind it, right?
No, we have very good drainage. No, we have very good drainage.
Okay. All right. If everyone's all right with that, I'm gonna move forward and open the public hearing. Thank you, Susan. Any comments from the public? Hearing none. Going to close the public hearing and bring it back up here. There's a motion on the table with one change.
It's simpler if you just make a new motion, because unless you gotta amend the motion. If you truly want to remove that darn microwave and put that in your motion, I would suggest a new motion.
But if it's saying it's either-or, it doesn't matter if you even have it then.
It does not say either-or.
It's a comma.
Oh, okay, it's a comma, okay.
Okay, I'm gonna make the motion that we approve this with the condition without the requirement for having a microwave.
Well, I second it.
I could offer an amendment to that and suggest that we say either-or.
Okay.
Microwave or stove, in the event that the applicant wants.
Well, stove is already required.
Either-or. It means to, it's a means to be able to heat and cook. If a microwave or a stove meets that requirement, then that meets the intent of the Ohio Building Code. And I would suggest that we don't restrict the applicant from choosing either one of those two, if in the event that he wants to rent it and get the stove out of there or rent it and get the microwave out of there. So we can say either-or in the coming.
Okay. Right now, it's required, but isn't it?
We, I'm in favor of that, though. That's fine. Okay, so you are moving to approve the conditional use with either a stove or a microwave, but not the requirement of both?
What happened to our other motion?
At this point in order, we probably need to.
What do we do with Ted made the original motion, I seconded it. We move down to another motion?
We probably were pretty mature though.
Well, we work it, so what should we do?
All right, so there, in effect, so there was discussion on your initial motion.
Yes.
That discussion led to a proposal to amend the motion. So there needs to be a second to amend the motion, I believe.
But there wasn't. We've made a new motion. I made a new motion.
Shouldn't it actually be Ted and Mary Ann who agreed to amend their motion, since it was Ted's motion and Mary Ann's seconded? I, correct me if I'm wrong, but the second, the second motion is still, to me, it's still under discussion. So if you amend, you change that and you simply say, I moved to amend the initial motion to waive the requirement of both stove and microwave and require that one or the other be required.
I'm not that motion.
It was now a second. Your answer. Second amendment. So now, Rose, you are gonna call a vote on amended motion.
All right. Ted?
Yes.
Mary Ann?
Yes.
Yes. Right?
Yes.
Me, yes. Thank you.
Thank you. So are you gonna change the law? That didn't change.
Just for you.
That's only for me.
I bring it up every time. We'll eventually change it.
Everyone's happy as long as your food is hot.
Yeah.
And we're all coming over for dinner.
Not if I'm working.
Okay. Now, we're going to move on to talking about how we're going to address the comprehensive land use plan. We've had some discussion of this in the past. Frank, what is our mandate?
What's, what do we need to have it done?
There is no time to.
There is no time. I mean, when would we like to have it done?
It'd be nice to have it before the end of the year.
Yes.
That would be nice. I think you've all received, you sent copies of the 2010.
Yeah.
And now she sent, she's sent all these appendices. So I don't know if this would be something we'd want to meet, like in a smaller committee level, like during the week and kind of work on it outside of the planning commission meeting, as far as doing the nitty-gritty stuff and then bringing those drafts back. I guess right now, we just need to formulate a process.
Well, with a document that's going to size, you don't, you can't start with the small things. You gotta start with the whole package, looking at the overall organization, the overall content. Because if you start working on a section and just spend ten hours working on a section, later on, you may decide to cut that section, or something like that, and then you've wasted the time. So I think maybe a way to proceed is for everybody to look over the whole document, decide in light of what's already there, do we need to keep all those major sections in it? Do we want to keep all those sections in it in the order that they're currently there? What additional sections do we want to add? For example, with the, I forget the name, the transportation philosophy. What was the name of that?
Act of Transportation. I don't know.
You know, you want that to be a section of it and where we want it to come.
Plan and Action Plan.
Right. You know, what new sections need to get added? Start with those big questions. And then, once we decide what the overall shape and content is going to be, then we can start working on individual sections from there.
I agree. My first attempt, when I read the plan, was first redo my own index. You know, I mean, it's frustrating to see a document that doesn't have an index. And that gives me order in which to look at, how is this thing thought through?
Yeah, it's not all over the place.
It is all over the place. And so, you know, I, in my first set of comments, I started to come up with my own index to just try to house this in more of a planning approach, looking at, you know, the things of an introduction, what's the purpose of this document, going into an overview, history overview, then talking about regional impact, talking about local impact, and then working down all the way into the core of the village and how all of the things that affect the decisions are made. That's a typical comprehensive plan layout. You know, this plan is just everywhere, and it's very wordy where it does need to be. Simple statements can suffice. My other comment was that I really felt there weren't enough visual attachments. There should be a map, you know, the same base map with information on that base map for all of every single section to help put a visualization on how this whole thing looks like in the village. And so, you know, I totally agree with Frank. I think our first step is to really look at re-indexing it, including the things that we know are on the table, how do we need assessment? You know, I mean, there's a list of those things. You probably know that list better than anyone. Of things that we want to consider and how they might fit into an overview of that in new index and then start a strategy to pick.
Sounds good. I'm like, it's so hard to know, taking that first step.
Yeah, well, and the first step might be for us all to just really go through it, kind of quite to come like that and put together our own, our own index, as you call it, and then come together again and put their notes.
Yeah, yeah, because I think that, you know, with five people looking at it, you know, it's really good to get five different, completely different views of what that, how that order looks, how that index looks. You know, that's really gonna get us more in the consensus moving forward to coming up with a strategy on where to move next. So, you know, I agree, I think that's a great first step.
So is that something we could shoot for to try to do by our next monthly meeting?
Do we have a lot of stuff on the agenda for next meeting? Or do we want to have a special meeting?
I mean, you know, I never know. I mean, right now, no, but I'm sure we'll have something, but it won't be.
I think that there is gonna be occasion where we may have a special planning, you know, literally a work session meeting. Where we've gotten easel with pens and, you know, that base map. That's why I like the base map. You know, but have that on every presentation and then we can sit and talk by different, you know, views of what that means.
Yeah, have the index up on a board.
So Frank, what is it that you're wanting us to do by the next meeting?
I would say read through the diagram. Make some, you know, generate some thoughts about overall content, overall organization.
What we want to add, what we want.
All the appendices that are there and some may not need to be there. And then we have things that aren't there. You know, like we have, I don't know, is the well, the housing needs assessment is one, it's not in here. It's just the old one, the vision plan. I think they incorporated parts of the vision plan into it, but not much.
The part that came out of the vision plan were the value sections that went through that whole, there was a whole section that had the values and then the values matched the categories on how that works. I thought that was very good, actually, but there's also a document, the Bicycle Enhancement Committee, document that I think rolls into the Act of Transportation thing. There was a map. That one definitely got out of math.
Sidewalk study?
Sidewalk study should go into the transportation.
So, and one of the things that we do while we're thinking of things that need to be added, if those things actually exist, can we email Judy and ask for them to be available?
We can probably find him somewhere.
No, so if you think of those things, email Judy and.
She'll let me know.
Yeah.
And then Judy will send them to us?
Judy will have them in a packet?
Yeah.
Okay.
If we can get them to you ahead of time, we will.
Yes, that would be helpful to, I don't know who does, who would do this if we have anything on record, but what, what properties around the village are already underneath? You know, I mean, since that last plan, any of those, the land is now.
Well, council land, of course, does that.
Okay, yeah, that would be great.
That would be really great.
Yeah.
I, I'd like a document that has all of the conditional use things that we've done, you know, for zoning and planning purposes. You know, where the actual, like where there are businesses in residential districts or where there are accessory dwelling units that have been approved.
Maybe a list of, of conditional use approvals that have gone through. Have we tracked that or is that something?
I mean, I have. It goes back, it's sketchy and there's some missing years, but yes.
I don't know, how does that fit into the comprehensive plan?
You don't think that's part of the comprehensive, that should be part of the comprehensive plan?
No, I think there's a statement about density, trying to improve on density, trying to improve on mixed income, some mixed use in some areas downtown.
But, I mean, but these are the kind of conversations we can have.
Yeah, yeah.
Right, you know, so if you think that you'd like to see it in there, then add it to your list.
Yeah, I mean, if it triggers conversation about how there's organizational things, absolutely.
I mean, I don't, I, I haven't seen a comprehensive list of, but that, so I don't know whether or not it says anything or doesn't say anything.
More than the use, I think it's more what we want to see is the land. I mean, you know, a map of the, of the properties that are around, that are not developed yet.
Yeah.
Current speed of.
The current state. And then because the next time that zoning, or that comprehensive land use plan is updated, maybe some of those properties will no longer be in that.
Then also, I guess, thinking of what Rose was saying, say like in President C, might be interesting what, where are businesses? I mean, are, because that was liberalized to both the residents, residents, but also business. So are businesses expanding? That's the kind of thing.
And a lot of those things.
Our uses changing.
Change with, you know, they sort of are grandfathered in and people don't come back and they're being, you know, it's a new business or, you know, it follows the property more than it follows a person, and that'd be. I know it's not technically land, but.
Well, the comprehensive plan is a, is a policy document.
Yeah.
You know, that's the difference between it and the zoning code. And, you know, in my mind, that's a zoning code designation. I think, though, that the, you know, the comprehensive plan should definitely address the changes that we've done in the zoning code to the map, because we did, we changed districts pretty significantly, you know, down the cores, the major cores, State Street and things like that. And so that, when we go through that, I think, you know, you brought up a great point about looking, kind of doing a little map of where all the conditional uses have happened. And is there a pattern to that? You know, does that pattern fit with the intent of what the zoning code changes have been? And that's where it comes into a policy.
Yeah.
So there's validity in that for sure.
And some of the data from the housing needs assessment can be, which really clearly looked at that, like accessory dwelling units and things like that, can be, what went into this?
Yeah, I think some sections will go really quick. I think that other sections are really gonna take a while. The housing needs part and the transportation part are gonna be really slow and drawn out. You know, because, you know, in my mind, one of the big policy things that the village has tried to really push is walkability and likability. And that's not evident. You read our comprehensive, it should be loud in polls and then followed up with the work that's been done to try to achieve it. And it's just not showing up. And that's what I'm like.
Then we have the parks master plan document from nineteen ninety-three. Whenever, eight.
There's a lot of maps.
There was a lot of planning going on. Not much happened. So old that, you know, I think we have a couple parks since then, right? Like Skate Park. Women's Park.
Well, and the gardens, you know, how does community gardens fit in?
Right.
Where's the dog park, though?
Too bad we don't have that, but it's a lot of.
Yeah.
It's Twin Towers. That's where people take their dogs and run and loose.
You know, I saw in my Facebook feed, three years ago was the Antioch, what was that called? Where they talked about their base of land.
Yeah.
The charade?
Charette.
Charette. And they talked about a dog park. That's what happened.
They almost got there. And then they, now they're gonna do houses there, so. But do you feel, Frank, that we're okay with this assignment? And we can go forward?
So the next meeting is April twelve?
I believe so. Same day as this one. You know, these short months that's over here.
April eight.
April eight.
It was March and April, or it was February and March, April twelve. Yeah.
Well, Denise and I can, if you'd like, on that agenda, parks out, how much time, it looks like the lease, you can say indices, you know, overall view, insert, assign times to those, so you've got something with Frank if you want. Let's do that.
You know, that's gonna conflict with the housing needs. You know, that's going to conflict with the housing needs assessment. Do we, would we want to in April maybe have, could we have it on another day?
Source Water Protection Plan, probably another thing. Especially the time of travel.
Isn't it during the day? No, that one's at six o'clock at the Bell Street. I see, go ahead. I'm not going to say all the same. Denise wants that one. Well, we'll just keep it for the, for the 9th. And I'm, I don't have to be at all of those meetings, so, with a housing needs assessment, which is at six on the night. You don't have to be at all of them, Mary Ann.
Me? What, no, I don't, but I'll be as many as I can.
Okay. Planning Commission is the same night as the Baptist Church.
Oh, it's not the 12th?
No. Oh, that was February, March, sorry. So, yeah, the night. Okay. All right.
All right, so, um, so new business, should I talk about that? Do you know how many?
I don't have.
Okay, and agenda planning, we sort of just did that. Anything else? Motion to adjourn?
I'd like to see if we are all going to be able to go to at least one of the sessions. So none of us can go to the 9th, but there's the 4th.
And do you know what time does any of them?
The 4th is at.
Seven o'clock at Mills Lawn.
Seven o'clock at Mills Lawn in the evening. In the evening. The 5th is.
10:30.
10:30 in the morning at the Senior Center.
Yeah, and how long do you anticipate those lasting?
No, well, we're budgeting for an hour and a half.
Okay.
So it won't last more than two hours. And the 21st is Saturday at 2:00.
7:00 P.M.
Here.
And then you can all.
On the Z Rollers, we're at the Senior Center at 5:00. And the 4th, you says what, 7:00 at Mills Lawn?
Day.
Yes.
I'll be able to go on the 4th.
Yeah, I'd probably, would be able to.
Wednesday.
At 2:00. I might try it on the 4th. Do we have a motion to adjourn? So moved. All right. On favor?
Yes.
Who made that motion? Sorry?
Uh, 6:00. And Frank?
Should be on the left side. So, yeah, you had also the motion for some organizations.